All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And this is April 21st of 2022. Let's start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, home to God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, a perfect number. Everyone here can vote. So in attendance is Dana, Mary Beth, Sherman, Andy, whoops, Howard, and myself. Jim, actually, I think you're an alternate. We've got.
Well, there's only, I only counted seven of us, including Jim.
That's six.
Okay.
Oh, we're good.
We're good.
Yeah, Howard's up there, but I didn't think that Norm was here, so.
No, I think Howard's the only one.
Virtual.
Yeah, the remote.
So that's.
For the planning commission. So that's seven. That's perfect. So everyone can vote. Okay, first order of business is the agenda.
Go to approve.
No, second.
Thank you, Dana and Sherman. Anyone have any comments or want to change anything around? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there, we're now at public comment. Is anyone here from the public? Or is everyone here for something on the agenda? Okay, the latter. Okay, okay. So let's move down to new business. And we've got some familiar folks here back with most, I think they have everything they need for a boundary line adjustment now. If you wouldn't mind coming up and just giving us a brief description of what's, what you're asking for here, then we'll go through the paperwork that you submitted. Yeah. If you would. That way the microphone can pick you up. Okay. Jimmy, you might want to swivel the microphone back your way, the one on the your microphone on the left. Okay, that's okay. And stop meddling, huh? Okay, your name?
My name is Jeffrey Patch. And we've, you know, we came in early on, got the information we needed from you guys to move forward with this, with our boundary line adjustment with our neighbor. So we've had an official surveyor done by Bob Tinker from Pittsford. He did a nice job here with the drawing, surveyed all the properties. Clearly shows the new boundary adjustment. We'd be picking up 1.84 acres. The fusil, we obviously losing 1.4 acres. So our new total would be 2.8 something, I think. I don't have the application in front of me. And then their new parcel will become 4.57. Stakes have been driven. He did a nice job and it's pretty cut and dry. See any issues? So yeah, we're just here to get approval to move forward with the fusils to exchange change monies at that point.
Okay. So all of the markers, the markers in all of the corners now?
Correct.
Yes. So you've there's a couple prerequisites, you reading and complying with the subdivision regulation, which doesn't, this falls into that. I mean, it's not a subdivision, but it's in that ordinance. You've completed Form 1. That one. And Form 2, and the $50 permit fee has been paid.
I told, I totally forgot that we can write a check right now.
Yeah, I don't, I'm sorry, we're curious if they got it, but I'm not sure. If it's not written on there, probably not.
Says he hasn't paid yet.
Okay. And then we'll need final plots after approval is given.
Yeah, I think.
Planning Commission.
Right, I think Bob's ready to do that upon approval, and he'll come in and give all this information to the town.
Okay. And you, you, this boundary line adjustment will not violate any existing land covenants or Act 250 permits?
No.
Okay, so we've got the owner information here on Form 1, and series of questions, more questions here. On, on the sketches that we have now, the surveys, the proposed changes, the boundary lines are there. Yes? Okay, just why don't we go, just say no if, if any of these are not applicable. Name and address, a professional preparer. Numerical and graphic scale, plan, date, and north arrow. Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities, and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge, wet areas, excessively steep slopes, and rights of way. And a location map. Small and.
Did we say something about not needing wooded areas and for a boundary line adjustment, even though we would need it otherwise?
Yeah, we've worked around it.
We've worked around that. So that's not even.
It is, um, okay. Okay. So we still need to do a hearing, need to do a public hearing for this. And the classification bill, refresh my memory, the boundary line adjustment classification approved, yes or no? That's if there's any question whether. Right, right, okay.
And we determined that it would once the survey was done.
Okay. So, um, we just need to let the, you know, do, do a hearing and let the public know what's, what's going on here. Even though, you know, you, you and the other landlord work things out. So we meet again on May 12th. Is that convenient for you two to come back in?
Yeah, sure. Is it Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Another Thursday. Okay, anything else, Phil, that we need to, do we need to fill out the approval? This is afterwards. So we, we'll do the hearing, we'll make formal approval, if all goes well there. And then on night, you have 90 days to get the Mylar into the office. From the approval date.
That would be probably at the next hearing, right?
Yeah, yeah, we usually do the approval.
So you have 90 days from May 12th, assuming that everything goes smooth.
Yeah. Any questions of us?
I have a question. Um, because of the size of these two parcels together, does that trigger any further requirements with the state or anything?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Does anyone else heard anything like that? Okay, I think we're fine there, yeah.
The only question I would have is it sounds like things will go well on May 12th, but is there, what would be a holdup? What would cause it to not get approved? Because we've done our due diligence.
Right, it's a more of a formality now.
Okay.
It's a public hearing, and at which point in time, anyone from the public could raise a concern. We don't know of any. But that's the only thing that I could anticipate happening that we don't already know, because everything that you've done so far has been in alignment with what would normally pass approval, as long as somebody doesn't raise a question at the hearing that would, we would have to then address.
That's true.
And if that's, if that's the case, then there might be more tasks for you to take. We can't foresee anything based on what you have submitted to us at this point.
There's extra copies that you guys, would you like these or are you all set?
Good.
I'll take, I'll take one if you've got an extra one.
We'll try to keep on hand and not have to, you won't have to bring them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
And Bill, we can leave these with you, right?
Organize this stuff from Bill. Now on to the proposed subdivision. And are you James?
Talking to me, I'm Donovan. I work for Barnard Jarvis. I'm the one who kind of put the sketch plan application together. I'm here representing James.
This is, this not, this letter that he signed.
Okay.
Fun and joy.
I just want to thank you all for taking the time for having this meeting. I'll just kind of give you a brief overview of what we're hoping to do. So James owns a 51.7, you know, and change acre parcel off the end of Holly Lane. He's hoping to piece a lot out in a five, you know, five separate lots. Each lot would ideally be improved with single-family residences and would be served by onsite wastewater disposal systems, as well as their own individual drilled well water supplies. We have done test pits out there on the site. We've identified, you know, some good spots for potential wastewater areas, disposal areas. I'll just kind of go through the acreages of the lots. Lot 1 will be 6.4 acres in size. Lot 2 will be 8.7. Lot 3 will be 11.6. Lot 4 will be 11.4, and Lot 5 will be 13.7. I know that we've been kind of going back and forth a little bit with James, and potentially he might reduce it to four lots. You know, I was out there surveying, running the boundary out on Monday, and we set some house stakes that, you know, where the houses would fall, and he's just kind of worried about crowding and stuff. And so he wants to make sure that it's a, you know, well laid out and set up subdivision, if it does, you know, go through with the town. We would be sharing, each lot would share a 14-foot wide gravel drive that kind of already continues off the existing cul-de-sac in Holly Lane, and you kind of drive down the hill, and there's an existing gate. And that road pretty much runs all the way down through to the Velco power line east and all the way to the south of the lot. I wouldn't call it, you know, it's not necessarily an existing gravel drive. It's more of like an improved farm road, you know, kind of dirt, dirt trail. So it'd be 14, the, all lots would share that 14-foot wide gravel drive that would run, you know, from north to south. And then the driveways would kind of split off and be 12-foot in width as they come off of that. There would be a 50-foot wide right of way centered over that driveway until it goes down to the farthest south lot, which would be Lot 5. There are, you know, a little bit about the site, about the parcel. As you kind of stand in the center of the parcel on the road, if you look to your east, it kind of gently rolls uphill. There's kind of, you know, it's an open meadow. And then behind you, it's pretty much wooded almost right along the western side of the road. You know, there's a few spots where the wood line kind of dips further away from the road, and then kind of comes back. He is proposing to put most of the homes out kind of in the clearing, so there would be minimal clearing. You know, if this does go, you know, if the houses are constructed. Lot 1 is right currently where the house is shown is within the woods. So it would have to be, you know, some, you know, clearing done for the driveway coming up, and then clearing for the house site. And around, you know, 10 feet around the wastewater disposal system. There are wetlands on site. There is a pretty large wetland complex off to the west of the property. You know, kind of where the tenny brook comes down and dumps out. And we have had Dory Barton from Arrowwood Environmental out on site, and she has delineated wetlands. But on the map, if you have it in front of you, there's kind of this on Lot 2, it's visible in Lot 2 and 3, there's kind of a dashed black line that's called out. That's an Arrowwood environmental study area. So she was out there. But she didn't go all the way down to the south a lot. So we'd, we'd want to have her back, back out there to further delineate the parcel to make sure that there's no other, you know, wetlands on site for Lot 4 or Lot 5. We would be proposing to improve that kind of farm road that passes through and exit, you know, a wetland buffer that she did delineate. So a wetland permit would be obtained at that time to make sure that's, you know, all okay with the state. Other than that, that's kind of pretty much the overview. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one. Can you just be a little more specific about where that wetland location is demarcated on the map?
Yeah, so if you look at the northern property line, as you see the dividing line that runs north-south between Lot 1 and Lot 2, kind of right at that kink point where it hits the tenny brook, there's a faint, it's hard to see on the, on the little scale maps. There's a purple line that kind of has an arrow pointing off to the west. So the purple line is where the wetlands have been delineated right along the wood, right along the wood edge. And that arrow is indicating that it kind of goes off into the woods. And the same thing, you know, right at that northern property line on the, that would be the eastern side of the road, there's again, you know, the, it's a really small area that you delineated that kind of, you know, bleeds back off to the east, back into tenny brook.
Same thing, purple line with the arrow.
That's correct, yep. And then on.
Up in the upper left-hand corner of Lot 2.
That's, yep, that's correct. And then off on the, you know, the left side of pretty much the whole eastern side of the property up, up high, actually on the highest elevations almost of the parcel. There is a purple dash line that kind of runs north-south that kind of zigzags down, down the property. And the purple line is the wetland line, and then the pinkish line is the wetland buffer line. So that's a 50-foot offset from the, the wetland delineation.
Is WB referring to wetlands?
Wetland buffer, and then WL is wetland.
Okay, got it, yep.
Yep.
So we haven't seen a subdivision with so much wetlands, you know, in a while. What would the permits, what do you think they might require?
So when we, yeah, when we apply for a wetland permit, essentially they want to know the amount of square footage that will be impacted. And so we calculate out, once we, you know, there'd really be minimal graded, grading needed for the road, since it is a pretty mellow grade all the way coming out. And so let's say it were steeper necessarily. You know, we'd figure out the grade of the road, and so we'd be able to determine, you know, how wide the impact area would be for a road or a driveway, let's say. And then we calculate the square footage of that footprint. And, you know, whatever area falls within the wetland buffer would be considered, you know, X number of square feet of wetland buffer impact, and then X number of square feet of wetland impact. And as the project's proposed right now, I mean, Dory has not gone further down south, but as it stands right now, there wouldn't be any impact to any wetlands, just wetland buffer. In the state, I just did one up north in Cambridge where we were crossing a wetland buffer pretty similar to this. And they wanted to know the square footers of the impact. And when we applied for the permit, we actually did a kind of a small set aside mitigation area where we set aside a chunk of wetlands to, you know, kind of say like, these will be conserved. It's, you know, you kind of take out of this, this jar over here, and you put it into, you know, another jar. If that is a, that's a horrible analogy, but hopefully the message got across.
Okay, and so this wetland permit would be, you'd go for that, you'd ask for that for the entire subdivision? Or would it be lot by lot?
Would be kind of for the whole, the project as a whole. They're seen as like a, as a project, you know, for the subdivision as a whole.
Okay.
And so it would, it would account for, oh, sorry about that. It would account for, you know, let's say there's ballparking numbers. Let's say there's, you know, 2,000, 2,000 square feet of impact at the northern, you know, lot, you know, where the wetland buffer is crossing. Let's say there were more wetlands delineated down south, and, you know, let's say that was 1,000 square feet there. It would also account for that square footage. So it's, it's a sum total of all of the impacts, which is kind of, it's a benefit, I believe, because it's, you know, if it were done lot by lot by lot, you could maybe be like, oh, we got 2,000 over here and 1,000 over here, and so it's seen as separate. So it's better that it's seen all as one, as a project as a whole.
Mary Beth, you, you do, you work in this on a fairly regular basis. Does this sound like they're on the right path?
It does. Yeah, so wetland permits, usually if there's a driveway, as long as you have a non-wetland area that you're going to, those tend to be approved driveway permits.
And Donovan, it looks like you've done some soil testing in there. It's perking okay with all the moisture and the.
Surprisingly, yes. I mean, it's not the best stuff we've ever seen. I don't, I don't have the test pits on hand, so I'm speaking from memory. It's not the greatest soil ever, but it's, it's definitely suitable for wastewater.
Okay. Besides the wetland permit, from the town, you'll need to go to the select board for the road name and road location ordinance at some point for 911 purposes primarily. And then I think you might need a driveway installation permit, even though it's going to be a private drive.
I have a, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What is the, for in Rutland, how do you determine, so if it's a shared gravel driveway versus a private road, are they kind of seeing one as the same?
Howard?
Yeah, well, basically what we do, any, any drive that has more than three dwellings on it has to have a name.
Okay.
If it's a private drive, then around the town, we, we use the phrase, it's a place. So it could be, in this case here, Holly Lane is a town road. It's a paved road. And I'm assuming that when you continue on, it's not intended to be a town road anymore going down over the hill. It may, it could be Holly Lane Extension Place. It could be something, something different, but it's a, a place. And those are private roads that are maintained by the developers.
Yep. And Howard, just out of curiosity, Holly Lane is the teardrop at the top of the map, is that correct?
It's a what?
Yes, that's, yep, that's.
The teardrop looks like a thermometer at the top of the map.
Yes, okay.
That's Holly Lane.
There's a little turnaround area at the end.
The circle?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it actually comes from Post Road. Holly Lane starts at Post Road and goes all the way, all the way down to this point you're talking about.
Right, but the, the developed area, the developed gravel road is on the southern part, or, yeah, is it the southern? I guess it is. On the southern end of Holly Road. Does that exist now or no?
The road exists, but there's no, no road name with that. In fact, that road is something that Velco got an easement for a few years ago. And they have an easement to maintain that road onto the power lines, so.
Okay.
And like you said, they'll be using that same road. But I think it would have to have a name for 911 purposes. They would have to have a name with 911 numbers and so forth to, for all the dwellings.
Because of the dwellings, right. Previously, it didn't need a name because there were no dwellings on there.
That's right, yep.
Yep. And that's going to become gravel as opposed to dirt? Is it currently dirt and going to be transformed to gravel?
That would be the goal, yes.
Yep, okay.
Did you have a question, Donovan?
Yeah, or just a statement. There was, there's actually, there's two existing residences as you drive off the end of that, the roundabout on Holly Lane, as you continue off. There's, there might even be three driveways. Actually, there's one going off to the, would be to the west, and I believe two that kind of, you know, peel off and go to the east. Yeah.
So there are physical dwellings on there already?
Correct, yeah, that is above. So if you're looking at the map where the, the dark, you know, the dark black boundary line, just to the north of that, there's a label that says Justin R. Abigail R. Henderson. They've got a residence up there. And then there's another kind of residence that doesn't have a name on it. You can kind of see the driveways just drawn on based on ortho photos, you know, coming off.
Okay.
Yep.
So I don't, I don't know if we can tell you whether or not you need the driveway installation permit. That, that goes through the highway department here.
Okay.
It, you may want to check with the select board on that.
Okay.
Since we don't have.
Person to talk to.
You can go through Bill Sweet.
Okay, perfect.
I'm in doubt, fast of being Bill.
He's our direct line to the select board. And then the other one is to, also to talk to the select board about is the road name and road location ordinance.
Okay.
Now, the first one we usually deal with, with the highway department, but we, we don't have a highway commissioner right now. So I'm not sure what, I'd like to hear the select board's advice on how we should determine whether it's needed or not.
So are we going to take that to the select, the next select board meeting? Is that?
Donovan, are, at any point, do you think that they will want the town, the road to be taken over by the town?
That's something I haven't talked to James about. It was our, just kind of what we have been talking about. What our thought was, was that it was just going to be kind of a private driveway that was, the maintenance was shared between all of the residents that would eventually live there. And so we didn't have the intent of the town taking it over.
So if the town's not going to take it over, then the driveway permits are probably not going to be required because that assumes proper access onto a proper town road. A proper town road, we're not going to take it over. So I would, I would assume it's probably going to not be required because it's not going to be our road.
So who waves that? Is that the select board or is that the?
I'd have to look at the ordinance, see if it addresses it specifically. I mean, it's kind of an unusual thing, but when we get the Pocahontas on Honeybee Place, I don't think they got a driveway access because it's not a town road.
So there may not be any determination for that?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be required because we do, we do the driveway access permits to make sure that the infrastructure, the roadway, the ditches are all.
Meet specs.
We're not going to take the road over, then.
Doesn't matter.
That's their problem. So.
Yeah, we've all.
And if in the future it were required, then they would have to meet those specs.
Yeah, before we do that, yeah.
Okay, so you can go for it after the fact?
You can. So in those cases, the, the road commissioner or the select board wants to see like the engineer drawings, the engineer, the as-built plans for roads and utilities and all that stuff. Because if we're going to assume responsibility for it, they want to make sure it was built to engineer specifications, not just, you know, put in there.
Yes, right, because the cost should not be ours, the town's, right.
Isn't there some concern for our fire?
That's what I was just going to.
Yep.
And how is that, how is that addressed?
So, yeah.
We, we were planning on designing it to be within the standards to be accessed for fire and rescue. We were going to design it to, you know, with the intent that it, you know, that the fire department wouldn't have an issue with it. We do, you know, most other towns, they kind of force, not, I don't, shouldn't say force you, but they, you know, you have to design the roads, you know, whether it's a, a pull-off every 500 feet, or, you know, a large enough diameter cul-de-sac for the truck to get around, or a hammerhead turn with a fire truck and get in, turn around and back out. So our plan was to, you know, design it to spec for fire and rescue.
Well, that would be another conversation with the select board, at a select board meeting with the fire chief present.
Yep.
Nearly all of those meetings.
Awesome.
To make, make sure his comfort level
Yeah.
is okay.
So there, there's a meeting on the 26th, and then another one on the 10th of May.
Yeah, Donovan, Donovan, you can work this out with Bill and what, when you'd like to get it on the schedule.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
So, um.
I had another question.
Sure.
Just, just the proposed wastewater system. It, i- is there? Are there, there going to be individual wastewater systems or is that one for the, to be shared?
Uh, it would be individual, one per each lot. Um, where lot five is shown at the far south of the parcel. Um, we didn't poke around too far down there. Um, we may go back and do a little bit more digging, uh, but we found. Just north of where that lot line is shown, there's test bit eleven, nine, ten and eleven. And we found a suitable sys, you know, spot for system in there. And so we could just kind of do a wastewater easement. And so. Those septic for lot five could be located on lot four, and then they would just have an easement written into the deed.
Okay, um, have a little list of questions for you too, Donovan. Uh, to go through. And then, then, um, we need to figure out whether this is a minor or a major subdivision. And that affects the next steps for this. Uh, first, um, this is for the group here, uh, boundaries and area of contiguous property of owner. Looks like those are there. Boundaries and area of property subdivided.
Yeah.
Proposed subdivision lines.
Yep.
Name and address a professional preparer.
Yep.
Yes.
Numerical and graphic scale of plan date and north arrow.
Where is the north arrow?
I don't see the north arrow. This, is it this?
It's on the, uh, in between the, the project location map on the right-hand side of the, the page and the inset of the property.
Okay, it's not labeled, is it?
It says VT grid. I guess, yeah, maybe we should put a, the N is kind of like a cursive wrapping around the. I can lodge a complaint to Jason, so we got.
Ah, I can see it now. I thought it was just looking like a snake.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, I, I see the N now, no.
Yeah.
I thought that might be what it was, but it wasn't completely obvious.
Existing features and facilities, including roads, public utilities and utility easements, wooded areas, structures, watercourses, ledge. Wet areas and excessively steep slopes.
Well, the topo, the topo lines are there, so.
And the wet areas.
Yep, whatever is, but, um, what about wooded areas? Are they somehow indicated on there?
They are. They're, yeah, they kind of get blurred in there with all the stuff.
I see underneath.
Kind of the squibby. Yeah.
Cloud line. Kind of googly map.
Yeah, it's, it's just great. It's, uh, obscured. Yep, I see it.
Uh, proposed improvements, including roads, utilities and utility easements, rights of way and structures.
Most of that is seen.
Yes.
It's here, the, just the utilities for lot five are, are here, but.
Okay, and then the location map up there in the right-hand corner. So this was going to use today's date. That was received.
Yep.
A subdivision number, Bill, do you have one?
Yeah, I've just got on there, I got it already.
Okay. So major versus minor. A minor is a subdivision that doesn't need any municipal services. Doesn't have municipal road. Uh, you know, essentially no impact on the, on the town. I think it is a minor.
Howard, do you have any thoughts about that?
I, I don't, I, I, are you going to have to get approval from? Out of, from a state level for this? Well, you're going to have to get approval for all the septics and wells and everything else.
Yep. And then would be the well end as well, would be.
Sure, yeah, you know.
Are you thinking, Howard, that we should wait until that is? That's been all approved to see whether there might be some municipal impact?
Well, well, right now, all this is, is a sketch plan. We don't have any bearings, distances, you know, iron pipes set or anything. This is. Just formally a, a sketch plan and certainly when, as this thing moves along, we're going to need a survey map with. Uh, completely, fully up to date with everything. So at this point. I, I guess there's not, uh. Too much else to do. I mean, they've got a lot more work to do.
Yeah, we're running out the boundary. This, that's what we were doing this week, is running out the boundary for the survey plat.
And then you're going to put the pins in as, as you're going or?
We, we don't like to set the pins without approval from the town. It seems to be putting the cart before the horse a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah. So I mean, if you, we don't, I mean, we've never done a subdivision in Rutland, so usually the town. You know, if you start put hammering and pins in the ground, they think that you're, you're trying to take over, you know, and they don't tend to like that.
I mean, certainly we can approve the sketch plan. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a complete good sketch plan. That, you know, prove it at, at, uh, at that level.
Yep.
Yeah, just looking for the subdivision regulations. That's the stormwater. Bill, do you have, could you call them up? Sorry.
So we will need a, um. Oh, this will need to be shown on the flat. Once this gets approved to move forward.
Yes, and then some. I mean, this is not enough.
No, I understand that. Uh, I'm just looking at our, uh, form number one, application subdivision. Six copies of a plat, sketch plan to be provided. That was taken care of. Required items below to be shown on the plat. So. These are items that we think are here that can be carried over and put onto the plat, alright? So that's all we're approving this evening?
Well, we need to, um, determine whether it's a major or a minor.
This evening?
Yeah, because that would give them even more direction.
Is there additional map? Uh, this is a sketch plan. Do you also have another map in front of you that I'm not seeing?
Or is?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so I'm looking at the same thing as the.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, the procedure for a minor subdivision, plats required. A minor subdivision shall require only the submission of a final plat.
So there's no.
The final plat. Yeah, no, yeah, un- unlike a major subdivision. Um, and then the final plat shall be submitted no more than six months following the determination of the planning commission. And then applicable fees.
So we're determining now. Whether it is a minor subdivision, and if so, then they have six months to submit the final plat. Based on what we've seen here on the sketch plan. So we're using the sketch plan to make our decision about whether the appropriate.
Under the assumption that it's a minor subdivision, yeah.
Well, we use the sketch plan to help inform whether this is a minor or major subdivision. We determine it's a minor subdivision, we don't have to take any other action until they submit a plat within the next six months. Is that right?
Hmm, that's what I think.
Well.
So how, what, is there a definition there, Barbara, that we need to review for major and minor subdivision?
Bear with us, Donovan, we haven't done this in a while.
No worries. I'm enjoying it because it helps me learn, you know?
So, um, a major subdivision, all subdivisions not classified as minor subdivisions. Including but not limited to subdivisions of more than ten lots. Or any size subdivision requiring any new street or extension of municipal facilities or the creation. Of any public improvements. A minor subdivision, any subdivision containing not more than ten lots, fronting on an existing street.
Yep.
Not involving any new street or road or the extension of municipal facilities.
Yep.
Or the creation of any public improvements.
Yep.
And not adversely affecting the remainder of the parcel adjoining property or municipal facilities. And not in conflict with any provision or portion of the town plan. Official map or this chapter.
Okay, so the two questions that we have to answer are the last two. Because those have not been addressed by this, this body this evening. Everything else has been addressed. So we're, uh, just looking as to whether it, it complies with the town plan. And, uh, the, I think it's number five, uh, lost, lost track there, but it's the second to last.
Yep.
Uh, item on that list, and I can't remember.
Was that impact on adjoining property? Was that?
Yeah, it was partly impact on adjoining property and something else.
Proposed, um.
It was in the definition of what you were just reading, Barbara.
Oh. Not adversely affecting the remainder of the parcel, adjoining property or municipal facilities.
Right.
Not in conflict with any provision of the town plan.
Right, that was the last one. Right. So off the top of my head, I don't see this as being, this is probably identified as residential, so it's not going to. Be a, a drastic, uh, departure from our land use. Map, which is what we're using basically within the town plan to decide, uh, what type of development occurs, correct?
Right.
So I, I don't think that there's an issue there. And the impact on adjacent properties. Uh, I, I can't see anything. It's an extension of something that already exists and it doesn't impact. That this whole lot, if it's divided up into five, doesn't change anything as far as I can tell. That's a red flag. So.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we need a motion, but I would recommend that we consider this a minor subdivision.
It, it, it could change depending on where they have to put the septic. That could, that could change over the property line.
Uh, it could change, right. Uh, it could, if the septic system from five.
No, no, with leach fields, that kind of thing.
But so, so far, there's only one septic that hasn't been identif, location that hadn't been identified. And that's lot five, I think.
Right. And there, there are three that are listed at lot four, uh, as he was presenting earlier.
Yep.
So the question is, does that constitute? An impact on an adjoining property or does the easement allow that to happen without?
Well, at this point, we can't answer that because I don't believe there's any record of perk tests anywhere.
And I'd like to see what the state permitting comes back with.
Yeah, and we haven't applied for a state wastewater permit. That would kind of be our next step. Once we get this categorized, you know. Because sometimes you go into a town and they're like, no, pump the brakes, you know. So we, we kind of wait to get the approval and then we'll be applying for state wastewater. Um, state for, state wetland permit, um, preparing the survey plat. Uh, making sure we're showing all the easements, proposed utilities and kind of that whole kit and caboodle.
I'd be reluctant to sign anything till we know where those things are going.
We don't have to sign anything. We just have to consider it a, uh, a minor subdivision unless additional information from the state. Uh, would indicate otherwise. And then they can proceed as if this is a minor subdivision. Unless additional information becomes available, at which point they would have to come back to us. And change the, uh, the request of the application from a minor subdivision to a major subdivision.
I, I was, Mary Beth.
Oh, and in the past, when we've done subdivisions, we've made it contingent on receiving the required state permits. Right?
Yes. Yes, it just seems to be a little more at stake here. Than, you know, being a subdivision and, and, you know, having five lots and five possible wastewater systems. Or that's what you want, five individual ones. Um, I'm not sure we need to make a decision on whether this is minor or major. We can. Right now, we can go on the assumption that we're thinking it's minor. Contingent on what information you get. In the permitting process.
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess so. I mean, that's kind of unusual. In my experience, we tend to like to know how the town. How the town's going to categorize it, so we can prepare the, the proper material. So when we come back the next time or the next time, we can. Have everything that we need ready.
Then if, if you want to do that and be safe, characterize it as a, a major subdivision, to Jim's point. Because of the impact of the, uh, uh, the wastewater. Um, easement that you were thinking of requiring on parcel four for parcel five. Because of the definition.
Oh, pardon me.
Go ahead.
That I don't think is, is applicable to what we're talking about. It would be a lot five. Was, was going to impact upon the adjacent land. Not, in lot five is impacting on lot four, which is a part of this subdivision.
Okay, if that's the way you're reading it, then.
If that is, I think that's the way we should look at it.
I had.
And in that case, I think we should just, I don't see any reason not to categorize it as a, as a minor subdivision.
Does that require a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to characterize the, uh, since I was wanting to brought it up originally, to characterize the application for. Uh, the, uh, Theodore, um, subdivision. As a minor subdivision.
Second. And I would just say that's based on the information we have now. If they, if they come back and this is not, it's not the same, then.
Right, if, if new information, right, contingent upon the information that is presented this evening.
Right.
If anything should change, we would have to revisit it, but.
So you're adding that to.
I will add that to my motion. So my motion will be to, um, characterize the Theodore subdivision. Uh, based on the information we have this evening as a minor subdivision. Uh, if any additional information comes to our attention that would require, uh, re-characterizing that assessment. Then we would, um, reserve the right to have that presented and rediscover.
And the, okay, and I'm not going to repeat that. Everyone understand the motion?
Tape, right? He'll, he'll produce it the exact same way that I said it, so.
Any further discussion? Yes, Donovan?
I have a question. Uh, what if we decide to remove a lot and we go from a five lot to a four lot? Would we have to like? Recategorize it as a minor or is it assumed that we're like making it better? So it's. Um, you know, would we have to revisit the whole thing or can we, let's say we're going through, we survey, we're surveying it, maybe. You know, once we set those house stakes, they were set the other day. James goes out there and he's like, man, you know, I really don't want the three houses kind of on this ridge line, you know, I really just want to go for two. Is that, do you see that as becoming a problem?
I, I see that we'd have to, yeah, we, we have to address that again.
Okay.
It won't change the characterization of the subdivision, not likely. But, uh, you would need to characterize it because the sketch plan would require to be in alignment with the, uh, final plat. And if the sketch plan is approved as this and your final plat is different, I'll ask Howard for an opinion, but I, I don't think that that. Would be in alignment with our regs, but. I'll look to somebody else with more experience.
I, I'm not totally sure, but I wouldn't think it would be a problem.
Well, let's just, uh, go by the book here and, um, let's vote on the motion. That, um, this, this is a minor one contingent on a number of things. Um, and. Chairman? Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that's clear as mud, right Donovan?
I appreciate all the input. Um, thank you for taking the time for the meeting. Um, I've got a whole list of things that I need to address and make sure that I talk to the select board about the road location. Um, the ordinance may not need driveway installation permit because of, we're, you know, not intending the town to take it over. Um, and then, you know, coming back with a, you know, a complete plat. Um, and, you know, we'd provide all the site plans, all the wastewater design site plans and that whole kit and caboodle.
If you have time, it'd be great to have another meeting with you, you know, somewhere, you know, in this process. Before we get to the hearing and the plat stage.
Yep.
Like when the survey is done or some of the permits are coming through.
Yep, okay. And so with that, is that like an informal meeting? How would I, you know, I guess I'll just call Bill.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, we'll get you on the agenda, that's all.
Perfect.
It's just to provide guidance so that we don't get to, uh, a final. Do we, is that a hearing?
Yeah.
We don't get to a final hearing and find out that there's a problem.
Right, right, that makes sense.
And if we need to switch gears, I mean, if, if it becomes a four lot subdivision or something, you know, it'd be easier at that point too.
Okay, awesome.
Donovan? On your mailing list that you've got for your budding property owners, the very first name, David Stanton. He's in Florida, you've got the wrong mail address, so you need to get a proper mail address.
Florida, I believe I pulled it off the grand list. Awesome.
But he's residing in Florida, that's where you need to mail it to.
Okay, will do.
So that is an accurate address, Howard, it's just that currently he's not at that address.
That's correct, and all of his mail from the town goes to Florida. So I think if you looked at the current grand list, you would see, it should have a Florida address on it, I know it's been, it's been switching back and forth somewhat, but just this last year, I think we talked to him about it, he's definitely in Florida.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Donovan? Or anything else for us?
I think that's all I need, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good night, everyone.
Let's ask the question, just, it's a what if question. What if this had come through as just a subdivision, with no plans for houses, or septic, or any of that? How would we have handled that? Would the septic not have become a wastewater, not become a problem, an issue, or would we still have questioned it?
We would have questioned that, whether, how.
But if there were no plans to put houses there, just to sell the lots, we could, we would still approve doing that, I assume, without, I think we've approved subdivisions before like that, and it really, it's not an issue for us, because then the permits for wastewater and whatnot still have to be obtained from the state, so the person might end up with subdivided lots that are unusable. Well, it's just that, that what we went through tonight, we talked a lot about wastewater and that, and and I kept thinking, what if they, there were no plans to develop this property, what, we wouldn't have come up with that.
Why would they have subdivided lots if there was no plan to develop?
Well, they, they may plan to sell it. And then whoever buys it develops it, I guess, right?
Could have something like a planned unit development.
It just seems a little inconsistent, you know, we spend a lot of time, detail, look at certain detail, and other conditions, we wouldn't have looked at it.
Right. Right. Yeah.
I just want to be sure I understood that.
I think you do. And yeah, I don't think our ordinance speaks to that scenario. Which may be something we want to address. Okay. Let's move on down to old business. And Andy, I think you are the subcommittee for the building notification, anything to report out? Can you have something for us next meeting?
I don't know what, you're asking me to write an ordinance, and I'm not real comfortable with that, if you want to know.
Yeah, that's perfectly understandable.
I can certainly outline what I wanted to do. Whether, which I think we've all talked about, really, we, we want to put enforcement, we want to put teeth behind people having to fill out that notification permit, what, what, what do we call in that? Bill, if you could help me here, what do we call it, notice of?
It's the building notification ordinance.
Right.
Or just a form that we use, that people are doing construction, they just tell us they're doing construction, and what the project is.
Right. I mean, so really, the only issue there is, is what kind of teeth the select board is willing to put behind it. You know, even though it's essentially a free, a free to file permit, it still needs to have a fine or a penalty put back there, if, if in fact it isn't done. And so that's really where the ordinance would have to be, and obviously, if you're gonna, you have to have a, we certainly put the carrot there as far as making it low cost, and so then you just, you have to back it up with the stick, so to speak.
Um, yeah, how about a list to take to the select board? Not, not an ordinance per se.
That, that I would definitely be amendable to do.
Okay.
Just having that, and just saying, I don't know, I'm going to pick some arbitrary number, like $500 fine.
I was going to say, if we propose some, some number, some.
Yeah, some, something that makes it that people want to do it, but I think, and then it would also have to be combined somehow with, with certainly some more notification, because I would, I would bet the majority of the people in town right now have no idea.
Yep, so those are all good things to put in there, and I don't think we should spend the time drafting an ordinance until we get some, some feedback from the select board in direction.
We need to provide them with something to.
Something, something to consider, yes.
But if we, if we present, let's say there are 10 parts of it, if we present eight parts and say, we don't know exactly what would be acceptable for these other two parts, that's at least a start.
Right, at least they have a topic to debate, right.
And then we'll worry about drafting it, or sending it off to the town attorney, or what we, whatever we need to do.
Just give Bill more work, that's what we're going to do.
So I think Jerry is still on that subcommittee, and Howard, are you still on that subcommittee?
Yes, yes, I am.
Well, we'll talk then, there isn't too much talking to be done about this, really.
Yeah, just get it on paper for us.
Okay.
Be helpful. Okay, the subcommittee, the other one that's working is on the energy plan and a survey going out to residents. So I think I mentioned last time, the select board does now have an energy committee, an active energy committee of one.
Mary.
Yes, and Sherman, Norm, and I met with, with Mary, and we, we talked about the survey. She had some suggestions for expanding it, not just, you know, more questions, but that it also serve as kind of a database for what people are using for energy, how they're using it, and, you know, renewables, or, you know, electric vehicles, just, you know, just as part of each question of like, would you like more information, or, you know, what, what do you need to know about these things that are in our energy plan? We'll gather information about what people, we'll get some baseline data about what people are doing already. And hopefully, you know, expand on that. Anything else, Sherman, you want to?
I think you covered it, yeah.
Yeah, so we're in pretty good shape for getting that approved through the committee, and then we'll go to the select board with that. Down to select board meeting, not much to report from the last meeting. I really can't think of anything other than there was some discussion, I think it was the last meeting about the Cortina Inn, the former Holiday Inn, and how that's you know, it's a situation that's just happening beyond our control. And it doesn't seem like the town has as much say in, in what's going on there. And it's, it's filling up with, with homeless people, I'm not quite sure if they're all from Vermont or not. And we're just, I think the chief of police said that the, you know, the calls really dropped off for a while in the last year, you know, started dropping off, and now they're ticking back up responding to complaints and such. So that's something the select board is trying to stay on top of. And not getting much, doesn't sound like the communication with the state is, is really much. Is that how you understand it, Jim?
Yeah. I don't know, there's a whole lot can be said from, from here, not that I'm trying to suppress any discussion or anything, but there's a, there's a big question in my mind, they're talking 170 people down there.
Or is it the rooms?
Yeah, could be more people.
And on any given day, in Rutland town, coldest day of the winter even, I don't believe we would have more than a dozen or 15 homeless people that couldn't find shelter.
Yeah.
So that tells me that the state is shipping them in here from somewhere. And is that really fair to the town? Is it fair to the taxpayers, is it fair to the school system?
Yeah, and, and I don't, certainly don't think there's much the planning commission can do, I'm not even sure there's much the town can do when a decision comes down.
Then, it's my understanding, I haven't talked directly with the police chief, but the message, the messages that I'm getting back are that he can't get any answers, though, the state. I think personally, it's probably time to at least consult with the town attorney and have them deal with the state, because I don't know of anybody at our level that's qualified to carry on back and forth with those people. I really don't.
Bill?
That that has been done? And what was the result, Phil?
What's that?
Is it still ongoing?
Yes.
Okay.
So the town's attorney is involved? So maybe you can't speak to this either, but is there someone overseeing the assignment and/or transfer of individuals who are coming through this program at the Cortina Inn, in terms of amount of time, resources, supports, and what the next step is after this temporary situation?
Not that I know of correctly what the police chief does, I just wanted to ask that, too.
Okay. In terms of what he knows about the vision for this particular short-term solution to homeless needs.
And it sounds like the arrangement has been made, it's between the state and the owners of the hotel.
Yeah.
Bypassing.
Yeah.
Any, any.
That's what it seems like, yes. Yeah.
And it sounds like that's happened, that happened in the city, too, with the quality and same same deal, same, you know, no contact.
I, I think that there, that there is an attempt to address a a greater need, but the partners to be able to address that need are not at the table, and I think that that's unfortunate. If, I'm going to get myself in trouble. After July 1st, if there's still a need to explore this, you may have a volunteer from the planning commission. Because I, I think, I, I, I think that it's, I think that there are huge implications for learning, I mean, as an educator, I think there are huge implications for learning, and if that is not placed at the center of the interventions that are being proposed for families that are in need, that we are doing our citizens of Vermont a disservice. And I'm not saying that the town and the Cortina Inn can't play a role, but not knowing what that role is, I think is setting people up for failure, not success. And that's the perspective that I would bring, regardless of whether.
To not give the, the town and the health officer in particular information on where the background lies with, with these people, and what implications there might be for health concerns, you see, none of that's known.
The other thing is social services.
What's that?
The other thing is social services, to what extent are the residents of the Cortina Inn in need of social services, and what is being provided?
Like I say, my conversations have not been directly with the police department. But the information that I am getting is that it's very sketchy, this is nothing, nothing really known.
Well, there is an organization that is providing some social services at the Cortina Inn, there was in a paper.
There's an acronym for that group.
I don't know, I don't know anything about it.
Right. But they're not, they're probably not also being funded or enlisted by the state to do that, which speaks to the point that I was making earlier, that if there's not a vision and a consistent plan for how we're going.
With the state.
Coordination, right, somebody has to be taking point, otherwise you're going to have a fragmented, fractured approach to try to address a problem that's not clearly identified.
So Dana, you're, you're possibly volunteering to be a liaison between?
I, I'm, I'm saying that I, I would be open to the idea of exploring how this situation at the Cortina Inn could be better coordinated, and not by me, but I would ask the questions.
I hate to say this, but I really kind of feel that's outside of the purview of the planning commission.
Yeah.
It may be.
Completely outside of it.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
The, the basis of a Holiday Inn or any commercial lodging establishment is, is that they rent rooms to unknown people. And, and the problems and persons come in, now, we know that the people that are coming in are having their bills paid, or we assume they are by someone else, but I don't know where that.
So put it this way, Andy, if the select board wanted to hire a consultant to actually look into what could be coordinated, there is a member of the planning commission who might entertain that as an individual, and not as a representative of the planning.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely not the latter. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to do a little pocket park here, and share the screen. Even trying to share the screen now. This is kind of funky. I just have the seal now, Bill, and I don't I've lost the commands at the bottom of the meeting.
All pass, it looks like.
This is, this is just your background.
Right, I know.
Major presentation for the ultimate, I was.
What are you trying, is that your?
I'm just, I'm trying to get back to that.
Click on that for a second. Click on that for a second.
The Rutland Town, what was he?
I love this.
Mike?
Okay, so now you're getting your screen, yeah, and now you have to navigate to.
And then I saw later, I guess, in the papers and.
Like the window or application.
Files, let's just try files.
Yep. And this is on, oh, you want to go to here, right?
Yeah.
So.
This is so convoluted, Bill.
So you know what, go go down to here. And now go. Yep, so pull that up. Now open that.
That's, yeah, that's not it. That's survey, it's gonna take forever.
Okay.
I have an eight. Hopefully not. There have been times when I thought I was ready.
That is your flash drive, no?
Yeah, and some.
Lexar is the name of your.
Been able to resolve. But I I've been, I go to one of the doctors at the hospital about.
Sorry, everybody, we're still recording us.
And he brings in one and the guy gives him stuff to do. It helps. So. So far, that's working, I mean.
Yes, here we go.
Okay, different, okay. Okay, so just minimize this for a second and go back to, yeah, get rid of that too. And now. Actually, uh. Select a window or an appropriate application. Okay, why?
I just needed to share what I had there.
You're on files, aren't you?
Yep.
Try advanced, just out of curiosity, see what it has.
The last meeting we talked about.
Uh you want to share?
Yeah, I just remember reading it in minutes.
Oh, that must be, we talked about and we talked how someone.
Usually you can share your whole screen and I don't see that option.
Let's start over.
Interesting.
Oh, there you go.
Have this because there's a brush there.
So we're back. Yeah, it is up there now.
Probably the same thing.
So um we had some developments in both the highway right of way and the railroad right of way.
Okay.
The records were researched and the what what V Trans thought was their right of way. Was not completely true anymore. It was some land was given over to the town in nineteen ninety seven, so those green lines there. Um are the rights of way. Wait a minute, this is the old map. No, this is right, this is right, and so over the river, there wouldn't be any lines. So here we are. Th- this is the pocket park area here, you can see the cursor and. Up in here, we wanted to put some things in, um that is the right of way, V for V Trans. Uh the line does not go down Simon's Avenue anymore, you know, hasn't since nineteen ninety seven. It goes across Simon's there and then hooks up over here near Johnson Energy um to something more. You know, more standard right away.
It goes from the um westernmost line just before it goes off the map. And that goes straight across. You draw that line and make it straight all the way across, so it's only taking a few feet off the side of the road up. At the pocket part area.
Yeah, the the parcel line, the GMP parcel line is under the green right of way line here.
But that green right of way line has actually moved up about, I don't know, fifteen feet or maybe thirty feet. Towards the road, right? That's not the existing right of way. That was the old right of way before nineteen ninety seven.
I think this line was the same, it just, it before it it extended down Simon's, if you remember. You know, past where a normal right of way would be, and then it, you know. Uh it stopped for a while and then it said this, this was their land and this is town land too, where old Route Four used to be. And where it used to cross the river.
Yeah, there was a right, there was a right of way across it from crossing the river on both sides, which is no longer there.
Right, right.
There used to be a green line that ran all the way across and that's.
Yeah, let's, yeah, so we can forget those old green lines. The the, this is the right of way.
This is current.
This is current and, you know, this is in in the public, in the town records as being such. Uh you know, we we just, we drew this line freehand, but it's pretty close to to uh what it is. And and most of it's the parcel line anyway on that north end. So um a couple of other things from V Trans other than giving us our land back, if you will. Um they, they're not keen on moving the watering trough. From one part of the right of way to another one, you know, from the east side of the river over to the west. They consider that a traffic hazard, that someone veering off the highway could hit it. And, you know, get hurt. So their suggestion is maybe to move it down at the other parking lot, the south end somewhere. Maybe with some of the other historical stuff.
Yeah.
Um and there would be a permit needed to control traffic, um and that's about it. Um they're okay with a boat launch up here in the right of way on the river. And they're okay with spur trails going to that boat launch. And maybe going to a trail along uh the edge of the river.
Right.
So um you know, they said, once, once you have that approved by the select board or. You know, it's in the final design or something, they'll talk and we'll get it on paper. Um but right now, we've got their permission to keep these in the design. There, if we add uh like a, you know, Center Center Rutland Falls or Mead Falls sign, if we add a new one. Uh we would need to get a state permit, um probably one of those business signs and pay for that annually. Um that would probably fall into that category, but we're okay if we just want to clean up the one that's there. We wouldn't need any permits or traffic control or anything like that. So that's, that's pretty much um V Trans.
Does that, I'm sorry, does that impact our parking in that area at all?
The parking's, the parking's right here.
Okay.
So you know, where it is, I mean, that's what the design has it right now, so we're in the clear there.
It's just below the the um, yeah. It's just below the uh.
Did the planning commission make a statement saying that? Um it was a priority to mold that watering trough or whatever you call it?
Um just a lot of people have mentioned it, it's it's hidden now.
Right.
And it's, I guess it's hidden for safety reasons.
Well, it is kind of hidden there.
Yeah.
And I can certainly understand um their concern about it being a a traffic obstacle. The thought crossed my mind, since we've had a discussion about this uh quite some time ago. Would there be any wisdom in putting it over to the fire station somewhere over there?
Maybe. Um. I don't know, there's a lot of room over there, we probably still have to do, get a permit for traffic, traffic control and all of that. Um.
Traffic control.
Yes, just, you know, getting equipment to it.
Oh, to move it.
Moving it, you know, and, you know, limiting traffic.
It certainly wouldn't be, if we could find a place over there for it and everybody's willing to do that. Or pursue that concept, um it certainly wouldn't be a traffic hazard over there.
No, no, and you know, I, you know, a lot of people have mentioned it. Um it because it's hidden, but also because of its historical signi- significance and, you know, whether it belongs there or. You know, at the park with some other signage and things like that. I think it originally came from the fort.
No, it was originally in the middle of the road.
It was Crown Point Road, it was a watering trough for.
In the middle of the Crown Point Road, and it was somewhere between Simon's Ave and its current location, sitting in the middle of the road. Where the horses used to come by.
Yeah.
And it was moved when horses. Yeah, so I mean, it's not in its original location. So finding a spot where it would be appropriately marked with a historical map that would show its location, I think would be.
But it would still be in the neighborhood if we put it over there.
Right, yeah, so whether it's at the fire station, Jim, or whether it's right at the parking lot, those two spots uh right on Simon's Ave. And just be displayed as people pull in there, it it's six of one, a half dozen of the other. Because neither one of those spots is really near where it was located in the middle of the road, I mean. So you just want to make sure that that historical monument is preserved.
I also was was informed by someone that um that that was uh done by the DAR. Is that right?
Yeah, does.
So they may still have ownership of this thing.
They met with us one time when we were out on that walk, Barbara, do you remember that?
Yeah, I didn't go on that walk, but yes, I I remember you guys putting that in your report and um they were part of the stakeholders group.
Yes, and they were, they were favorably disposed to moving it so that it would get, so that it would get more prominent recognition, so. Um I mean, th- they could be brought into the conversation about whether they have an opinion or whether it would be. More appropriate to place it on the Simon's Ave parking area or at the fire station.
Yeah, so let me just um bring up one more thing, the the railroad doesn't have right of ways. Per se, they go by property boundary lines, so we're good here too, down on the south end. Um this is part of the same GMP parcel, it was just broken up by that old highway. Uh the town.
Is that property ours now, where the picnic tables are and, you know, if you go from Simon's Ave and you take a dog leg towards where there used to be a bridge? Is that town property?
This um.
Yes.
This is all town property.
Yep.
Yep, between where the parcels break up.
Right.
So this is GMP property down here and this is part of the railroad property line. And then, you know, it it takes kind of different turns around different corners, but that's. As far as our parks concerned, this is the property line that we'd be um concerned with. And, you know, we don't have anything beyond that line, we, you know, we we try to stay away from that to begin with.
Right, but that's GMP property there, that southern boundary, southeast boundary by the bridge.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's part of the same GMP parcel up here.
Right.
So uh the railroad's fine with with what we're doing, um they did have some concerns about the. Because there will be more people in the area, um and there's going to be more Amtrak traffic up and down that line. They really wanted to keep whatever features we had in that. Southern parcel of GMPs of to a minimum. And we don't have much here now.
There's an overlook that was proposed where that picnic table is on the. Uh near that number, right near where your cursor is right there, but I don't think we were planning to go much farther than that.
And there was a, we were going to improve the fishing um trail, the angler trail. And thirteen, it, we, we'd already come up with the idea of putting, of suggesting a fence.
Right.
To keep people away.
That was underneath the bridge, underneath the uh railroad bridge, right?
Well, that wouldn't be, that would be railroad property, you know, anything across this line here.
No, I understand that, but we were planning to place this, or we were suggesting that a face be, a fence be placed. To prevent access to the railroad area.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, so um they're, they're very um happy about that too.
So is that trail, what what is that trail number, right? Is that the the trails, that last number where your cursor is now?
That's the fence, number thirteen for liability reasons, add more fencing.
Okay, yep.
Keep people off the tracks. And then.
I see it.
Yeah, the other ones are are just connections, trail connections, and then maybe another picnic area. But those are probably all far enough away that we're gonna be fine.
Yep.
So we're good, uh we don't have any legal issues there, any property issues with either entity.
That's great.
And that's pretty much the 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 latest on the pocket park, the select board's waiting for a final report from me. Uh pulling all this stuff together.
And GMP has already signed off with on on this in terms of the items, no, they haven't.
No, there's still negotiations going on with with them over over the the parcel. And the and use of the parcel and how it will be, who will have say over that.
Okay, but are they good with the proposed items that are on here, the number, the bullet?
They've been going to the meetings and, yeah.
Are they good with the fence?
Are they good with the fence? They haven't been asked specifically, but they've seen these designs.
Okay.
So yes, that would be on their property.
Right, because we're not gonna put a fence, it's probably it's not ours.
But you know, this may turn out to be our property.
If they gift it to us?
We don't know, yeah, we don't know what the.
Okay.
So that's that. Any questions then? Bill, we'll have a, all the reporting to do. Uh in May too and. It's uh the the state system is is horrendous. So if you could just uh allot a a few days to do in all those final reports and financial things. Online.
This is belonging to the select board, this was on the desk, I think. Is this a select board map? Okay, I'll leave it here, not pick it up.
We have extra, don't we?
Um I don't have any with me this evening.
Well, no, there was one here, so I folded it up to take home. I assume.
I'll bring some more before the next select board meeting. Or at the next select board meeting.
So do we even have a target date yet for when this is? Just, just to ask.
Um I know the chair of the select board says, you know, when when you can't wait to see the fir- the the, you know, shovel, the first. You know, dirt come up with the the golden shovel, so. It's in so many words.
But what what's the next step, though?
The next step, you know, um is up to the select board what they do with the report, you know, all of this. You know, preliminary design scoping study that we've done and all that.
Yeah.
And um whether they want to pay, you know, pay out a pocket for a final design or look for another grant. To get that done. Because I think we definitely need one. Um we shouldn't just go on 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 this, this is more of a, you know, wish list of what could go in there.
I I I look at this as more of a definition of what we'd like to do. And how are we gonna do it and what it's gonna cost is is something else.
Right. Right, so. So I, yeah, I'm not sure how how they'll go about that, whether there'll be a committee, just that purpose or or what. But they'll have a, they'll have enough information to make that next decision. That next step. Okay, let's do the minutes. And.
Motion to approve the minutes from uh March thirty first.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Aye, pose. Hey, I skipped over announcements and news. Anybody have anything? Anyone to bring to the meeting? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
Second, oops, go ahead.
Okay, we are adjourned.